Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight, Thursday, June 16th, 2022. Our normally scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. I call our meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our next section, or actually, well, additions and changes to the agenda. The only thing I would like to discuss is, last meeting, we were talking about the LGBTQ proclamation, and that is supposed to have been discussed as per our minutes from last meeting, so I would like to move item five to after four, or I'm sorry, eight C. That way, we can have a discussion, hopefully come to an agreement, and make a proclamation. So does anybody have any problems with that? Okay, hearing none. We will do that. Our next section is our public comment section. And that is for anyone in attendance who wish to briefly address the board. We ask that you please state name and address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. If you wish to make a comment, please type comment in the chat box, and you will be recognized. And no comments? No?
Dan, we do have, this is Donna speaking.
Yes, please.
We, we did receive several letters and emails in support of the LGBTQ Pride Month proclamation. And those will be made part of the record. We received letters or emails of support from Erin Bousier, Kim Goldberg, Ron Goldberg, Meg Clifton, Nicole Collins, Nicole Matthews, and Mary Rose Mead. And the selectmen should have received all of those by email.
Yes, those came in today, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So our next thing would be appointments and resignations, and we have one resignation. Getting off track here. We have a letter from Jessica Dapis, resigning her position on the Ram Board of Education. So the motion would be that we move the Hebrew Board of Selectmen, accept the resignation of Jessica Dapis from the Ram Board of Education with regret and thanks for her years of dedicated service. Further, that the selectmen designate Friday, June 17th, 2022, as the posting date for the vacancy notice. The 35th and final day by which nominations shall be received is Friday, July 22nd, 2022.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, Andy.
You kind of jumped right in without recognizing me, so that was what was in the packet, but we have an updated motion with different dates. And Donna's got it up on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So I will reread the motion. Move the Hebrew Board of Selectmen, accept the resignation of Jessica Dapis from the Ram Board of Education with regret and thanks for her years of dedicated service. Further, that the selectmen designate Friday, June 24th, 2022, as the posting date for the vacancy notice. The 35th and final day by which nominations shall be received is Friday, July 29th, 2022. So, hearing the motion, any comments? Just like to say, Jessica, if you're out there in radio land, I hope you're enjoying Vermont. It's probably beautiful up there. So at any rate, any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Peter, yeah, I just, I've worked with Jessica over the years in a number of projects, and I just wanted to recognize, you know, or at least comment on the impact that she's had in our community for so many years, and her willingness to give back in a variety of functions. It is very much appreciated. She's helped me a few different times on things that I've been working on, you know, for the town, and really a great member of our community, and I think Maine is her destination, or where she is, but we miss, we'll miss people like that in our community, so I just wanted to make that comment. She was definitely a driving force in our community for a long, long time, and like, and many people who volunteer, sort of the unsung heroes in our community. I just wanted to personally thank her for what she did for the community, including the role on the Board of Ed, but even a lot of other things that she's done. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Peter, she's right next to me, and she heard you, and she said thank you, and she thinks the world of you, and has enjoyed all the things that you've collaborated on, so. She's excited for a new life up here in Maine, but you know, obviously with a little regret and sadness, but thank you, Peter. That was very kind of you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Other comments? Other comments? Hearing none? All in favor? Going across. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Our next thing would be the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to date, we've been working on Juneteenth, as everybody hopefully knows, at Burnhill Park in the Peters House, so it's going to be a Juneteenth celebration along with Hebron Day Summer Kickoff. There's quite a bit of stuff that's going to be going on this weekend, June 18th. It starts off at 9:30 in the morning with the Wall Street Cemetery dedication of African-American section, rain or shine. And from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., there's a participants and archaeological dig with Hebron Code. Learn our history, both local and national, there's live music, interaction drumming, tour of the historic Peters House, and learn how to be an ally. So there's quite a bit of stuff going on. We have some volunteers that work very hard, including Rich Marzy, Code, Parks and Recs, even though they're not volunteers, and a lot of other people I'm sure I'm missing, but it looks like they're going to have great weather, so hopefully people are going to come out and support that. I'm pretty sure they will be, but that's going to be a big thing for Hebron, so I wanted to at least acknowledge that. And I will be there in the morning at 9:30 or so. I'll be at the cemetery, but after that, unfortunately, I have a family wedding in the early afternoon, that I won't be able to attend the other festivities, so I apologize in advance. So I've been working also to regionalize the ACO, which is the Animal Control Officer. We're going to regionalize, hopefully with the town of Columbia. And we're working on that agreement, which will come in front of the Board of Selectment. Willie Bell, after 25-plus years, is going to step down as Hebron's ACO. The town was well-served underneath his able tenor and his discretion at that. That's not an easy position at all, and we received very little complaints while he did that, so. Wish kudos to him, but we're working diligently to move forward and regionalize that position. I've been working with the state and local police. Speeding has become a very hot topic in town. It's not easy to collaborate with the residents. The police department is doing the best they can to combat this situation. We have moved signs around. We have given out tickets. We've contacted and dealt with most of the offenders that you read or hear about on social media, whether it be motorcycles, popping exhausts, or certain vehicles. We've engaged with them. It's a process, but it's not going unattended, so I just want to make that clear. We did have a post-meeting of the Maple Fest this week at the lower level of the library. That went very well. Maple Fest went very well last year, and they're making plans and getting ready to see how we're going to do and what we're going to change for the upcoming season already, believe it or not. The Views magazine is out. Hopefully, everybody got that. It's promoting, you know, Hebron Day Summer Kickoff, so it was perfect timing. I'm glad to see some heads nodding that see that they received that. We went through with the tax sale, and we did very, very well. We took in a lot of money, well over $300,000. There's still three properties that didn't get bid on. One, we couldn't move forward, but the other two were, we're going to start foreclosure proceedings. But other than that, we did receive a lot of money in doing that, so we were, you know, very pleased. Also, I'm working with the new town planner and the town engineer, along with the engineering company Loops. Regarding the Wall Street sidewalks, there's been some borings done, and we have to put a little bit of a retaining wall up that wasn't originally in the first plan to satisfy shipos' concerns of that designated area, which seems to be moving forward. So we'll keep you posted on that. And then, most recently, we are setting up interviews for the Assessor's Office and a new deputy fire marshal next week. So those are some of the things that we've been working on. And that's it.
Thank you. And just want to also do a kudos out to the Hebron Historical Commission for all the work that's been done at the Peters House. They actually have a temporary CO now for the first floor. I urge people to go in, see the structure, as well as the other events that are going to be going on there on Saturday. Our next would be space here, our old business. So did you want to talk about this, Andy?
I did. So under Old Business, item A would be the American Rescue Plan, State and Local Recovery Funds approval, and then also the process for the special town meeting. So I had sent out, after the last Board of Selectmen's meeting, I was asked to reach out to the town attorney on the question of what they would be voting on, and especially if someone they wanted to change or delete an item on that list. At that time, the, I'm sorry, the town attorney supplied us with his recommendation, and there was two recommendations. I'm asking that the Board of Selectmen consider the second recommendation, which would be to cancel its special town meeting in regards to the rescue plan funds. We still want to go through with the special town meeting for the purpose of the Raymond property, but cancel the special town meeting notice in a public hearing, which we would change. The potential problem with the option is that it might raise attention to the fact that you would be effectively stripping the town meeting of authority and draw extra scrutiny and pressure on the Board of Selectmen not to approve certain items that might have otherwise not been challenged without extra scrutiny. So what, what this says in a nutshell is, the Board of Selectmen now already possess the power to approve the items or delete items as you move forward. The legislative body, if it goes to a special town meeting, can vote on that list with the projects and the amounts of money, and it probably could be challenged down the road. It's such a moving target, and we've put these projects in with very little study and background, that I'm definitely sure there's going to be a lot of changes. So that, it could get challenged, and I would hate to see that. So my suggestion would be we move forward that night with another public hearing to get more town input, but the final say on the approved projects would lie with the Board of Selectmen, because I'm sure as we move forward, with planning and zoning and regulations and, and state statutes, things are going to change. So I would hate to, I'd hate to tie our hands, and that's pretty much what that would have been if we went to an actual vote at a special town meeting versus the selectmen already possessing the power through the, you know, the government agency that gives us that power on these funds. I hope that was clear.
Yes.
It gives the public another opportunity to weigh in and
And I think it makes
vie for the projects that they, they want to see approved, but if there's other projects they feel we shouldn't be using these monies on, they still have another chance to voice their opinion, and then it's up to the selectmen to have the final decision whether to take that advice and add or delete items. It would have been a little bit more of a gray area if the special town meeting, being the legislative body, if assembled for a vote on a project in a list, and then we didn't go forward those projects, it would muddy the waters. And that's, was never our intention. Our intention was to be transparent and get them involved as much as possible. So I was the one that suggested that, and then after talking with the town attorney, I think the second option is better for everybody.
Excuse me. I myself agree. I think it makes it a lot cleaner, and we're able to move forward a lot more readily, which I think is critical to try to get as much of the bang for our buck as we can. Other people, other thoughts? Dan? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I agree also, and I think we've made some great strides and efforts to get people's input, and a lot of people have had comments and suggestions. And if we feel we need to get even a little more, let's do that, but I like that idea, and let's get a little more input, and let's move on it and make the decisions to go forward. I'm in favor of that. So what's our next step to finish our discussion and then vote on it?
Well, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance have already approved the list as it stands today. What I had suggested that we had bring it to a special town meeting for input, but then, as we did that, and we thought it out, and we looked at what the vote might be, we had a list of projects, and we had a list of amounts, which neither are finalized. So when questioning the town attorney, you know, he gave the two options. You could do that, but it, that's your legislative body approving the projects and the funding and the amounts. And, and none of that is secured yet. We've got estimates and proposed projects, but we still need to go through planning and zoning on some of them. We still need to meet with boards and commissions. I'm sure some of the numbers are going to change, so it just doesn't really require a vote of the legislative body.
Well, I wasn't, I didn't mean to vote on the projects and the allocation. I meant to vote on our process to say this is the way we're going to do it. I, that's, that would be premature to say we're going to vote on. I meant the process. Does that make sense, guys? That we're going to do it with another town meeting and get more input? Has nothing to do with making a determination on what projects or how much money each one's going to get, just how we go about doing it.
I like this as it was presented. It means that we, the Board of Selectmen, do still have our say in the process, and that's what I was concerned about.
Chairman?
Yes?
Yeah, I agree with what everyone's saying. I think it's a good move. I think it's a good adjustment, Andy. It makes sense for providing transparency and information. As Mark said, we have solicited quite a bit of input, and if, as I look at the list, I think we've represented a pretty broad array of constituents with the different well-thought-out projects that have been recommended through the, through the town manager's office and through, you know, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, all the folks that have touched it. And so it also gives the public an opportunity to present some ideas that maybe we could consider in that Phase Two of the funding. So I think it serves the right purpose by having it with this adjustment, this structure. It shouldn't be in the hands of the Board of Selectmen ultimately decide, because of the reasons you articulated, but it still involves the public, and it gives us a chance to hear more from them, especially as we move forward. So it's a good, I just wanted to express that I think it's a good move, a good change, a good catch, and we still give the public ample opportunity to, to engage in the process, so thank you.
And I see Tiffany is also nodding in agreement, I'm assuming. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I agree. I guess my only question would be, does, does this change then from a special town meeting to just a public hearing, or do we keep the call as it is? That would be my only question from a procedural perspective.
So that's where I was going to answer Mark's question. I think that's what his question was pertaining to. So as I stated earlier, you have a resolution, and we still need to move forward with the special town meeting because of the Raymond property. But what I would propose is we warn another public hearing prior to that special town meeting that was already posted. We've changed it. Hopefully, you guys will agree to, like, like I said, another public hearing before the special town meeting. The special town meeting is June 28th at 7:00 p.m. We could have the other one at 6:30.
Correct.
Okay.
Do we need to do a motion on that, or is just our, okay?
Yes. So you can use a portion of that motion that's already been resolved. The special town meeting be scheduled for June 28th, 2022, 7:00 p.m. in the Douglas Library Committee Room, and, and take that out, the ARPA funds. And you, and you could do Joe Chris.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out the quickest, easiest verbiage for this. So, we have the special town meeting. Is it still going to be a town meeting? It's going to have a public hearing?
You're going to have a public hearing first for the ARPA funds, and then we still need to continue with the special town meeting for the acquisition of the Raymond property.
Okay, so, do we, do we need to make a motion, and if so, I'm trying to get the proper verbiage?
Yeah, Donna, can you help him with that?
Sure, Chairman Larson. You, I think it should be two separate motions. The first motion would be to amend the call for the special town meeting to remove the reference to ARPA funding and just move ahead with the Raymond acquisition. And then that would be the first motion. And then, you could do a second motion to schedule a public hearing to discuss ARPA funding.
Okay, so, motion one would be to amend the town meeting. I couldn't write that fast.
Okay, so the motion would be to amend the call for the special town meeting for Tuesday, June 28th, to remove reference to ARPA funding and move ahead with the Raymond property acquisition.
Okay, so, hearing the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, and then the next one would be to have a second town meeting.
Public hearing.
A public hearing for the purposes of getting people's final inputs on the proposed ARPA funding items under round one. Is that good enough?
We would want to include the date and, and the time, so, Tuesday, June 28th at 6:30 p.m.
And I was going to say
at the Douglas Library.
At the Douglas Library, so, okay. So, hearing the second motion, again, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. Got that done? Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, that was a little convoluted, but
No, it, we got through it. That's what we do. Our next thing, discussing the cannabis moratorium and the potential next steps. Andy, I know you found out a bunch of information, trying to get more information, so, again. Turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So under this, thank you. Under item B, Cannabis Moratorium and Potential Next Steps, the Selectmen have voted to send the question on the regulations of cannabis in the town of Hebron to the voters on November 8th, 2022 ballot. That's going to be an advisory question. The Selectmen have expressed interest in holding public informational sessions prior to the vote. The Selectmen are proposing to have presenters at these informational sessions. The town hall manager will provide an update of information to be provided at the public hearing. Selectman Casper may provide additional information from his contact. So what I had done is I had reached out to CCM, and originally, they said, well, if you get any information, could you share it with us? Because it was such a new thing in Connecticut. They didn't think they had a lot of information, and then, of course, they sent me a bunch of of information a little bit later than that that I shared with all of the Board of Selectmen. There was a lot of reading, and a lot of it wasn't exactly what, Dan, you had asked me to do. You wanted either a regulatory agency or zoning enforcement, or somebody in charge of the town with the pros and cons, and how it's going so far. Selectman Teal had sent me a couple contacts. I did reach out to them, and I hadn't heard back. And then I know also, Selectman Casper is working with somebody, so I would turn it over to those two at this time.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You know, the only, the only, the contacts that I had recommended, they weren't necessarily personal contacts, but I thought it might be helpful on, to reach out to people on Massachusetts Advisory Board, because they've had this for several years now, so they have people conceivably, if they get back to us, who could speak to how it's going overall in Massachusetts. I also sent over several researchers as well. So they weren't people I had personal connections to, unlike Peter, but I thought that it would be at least helpful to try to reach out to different places that have instituted this and to, and to see how it's going. That's, that's all I have to update.
And I have spoken to, to my contact, and I'm the City Council on Lacey, Washington, and, and again, as I said before, they instituted the sale of cannabis a couple of years ago, so they, like a lot, like what we're hearing, there isn't necessarily a lot of easily attainable, here's some specific data, but there's no, he's work, he's going to be able to get me some information. He has regular contact with the Chief of Police and all that, and on a myriad of issues, and so, and some different specifics that he's going to be able to put together. So I am working on that, and we'll have more information as soon as it becomes available, so that is in motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I just piggyback off what Pete just said?
Yes, please. I was going to ask if we talked to you in a second anyway. Yes, please, go ahead.
Oh, thanks. So, what information you get depends on who you talk to. So i- if you talk to educators and you talk to police officers, it has its downsides and problematic downsides. And I don't see just being reasonable how you could not see that selling cannabis over in the plaza near Ram would go smoothly, and somehow the way teenagers buy alcohol, the way teenagers buy vapes, that that wouldn't carry over to having a straw buyer to buy that. And that's the way a lot of police officers see it. That's the way educators see it, because you deal with this every day. So for any state to say that this thing is smooth, and it's great, and it's going well, is disingenuous. And for people that do this every day, it, it's, it's not a smooth, great thing for everybody. So I just wanted to add that, guys.
This is, this is some of the input that, yeah, I, I want to be able to give the public as much information as possible, pro and con, you know, so, you know, I would be looking, hopefully getting information from getting information from, you know, the different, you know, the, I, I guess it would be the state police, uh, departments of some of these states, Massachusetts. Uh, I'm not even sure what other states it's legal or not in. Um, you know, but, but their outlook, uh, you, you're talking about the educational, the education professionals. Uh, here we have AHM, who I feel, uh, potentially could have, uh, a tremendous amount of valuable input, just so that everybody has got a, a well-rounded, uh, set of facts that they can then make a, a decision on. Um, you know, so, uh, yeah, it, it, the problem is trying to, to apparently get this type of information, apparently is a lot harder than, uh, I thought it would be.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think you're right. And I think Mark makes a good point. And it, the idea that this is going to be, hey, it's perfect is, is unrealistic. One, or, or hey, it's awful. And, you know, the town of Lacey, Washington is now, you know, a, a crime-ridden, you know, cesspool. No, it's just really assessing the risks. Even if we give folks a chance to think about the positives and the negatives, as you said, and, and the risks that are out there, like in the world, I, the business world I'm in, we assess risk every day. And so it's, is it an acceptable risk or not, uh, with whatever modification? So I think the idea that we are able to, even if it's in some respects anecdotal, at least it gets people thinking more broadly, um, positively and negatively about the issue, so they can make a well-informed decision. So I think even if we, uh, even if we have, if we have more information, it's just better information. So people can maybe move beyond having already made a decision. And, and maybe it won't, but at least we've done everything we could do to share with them some thoughts from the different perspectives. And so I think it will be hard, um, to get some of the data that we're looking for, cause it's relatively new, even in areas that have had it for a while. Um, and then there's a lot of issues demographically, things are different based on how your city or town is located relative to a highway and, and things like that. Obviously, crime can vary based on, on sort of some other demographic characteristics. Um, so there's a lot going on, but I think we're just gonna make a good effort here to provide as much information as we have. And I think that's terrific. And then let me, let people make their own decisions. So I think we're at least moving in a good direction here. Thank you.
Uh, one other avenue that you just tickled my brain on, obviously it's pretty easy, uh, would be insurance companies. Um, but, you know, maybe they would have input one way or another. I, I don't know. Um.
You know, actually, uh, it's shame on me. Uh, you know, I was apparently I'm on record to say shame on me. So shame on me because the, the company that I actually work for has a cannabis insurance program. Um, so I will reach out to them in addition to the other research I'm doing. Uh, you know, I work for a company that does dozens and dozens and dozens of specialty insurance programs, and one of them is cannabis. And so I will, um, uh, reach out to see if I can draw upon some, some data there, uh, because obviously the insurance industry doesn't go into business to lose money. So, um, they're, they're, they clearly have some facts in which, um, and to your point, not to go too down, far down the, the insurance path, but the underwriting process, uh, brings out, uh, the questions that come through the underwriting process bring out the risks that, um, are apparent in the exposures. So if I get caught in one of the questions, it'll start to sort of maybe get us thinking about how we can go down even different avenues, or even, whereas we reach out to some of the folks that Tiffany suggested, maybe we can ask some more pointed questions. So I appreciate that, um, cause that sort of got me thinking as well. So I'll do some more research on that as well. Thank you.
Okay. And then one other thing, and this would be Andy would have to do, would be to reach out to the town's insurance company to see if the town would be taking on any added liabilities. I, I, I don't know, but it may be a question that would be worth ac- asking.
Um, I, I can check. It, it wouldn't be a town-run facility, so therefore it would be a private entity that would be insured. But, um, I can ask.
Yeah, it's, it's an easy question.
And I would tell you guys, an insurance person, um, he's right. Uh, if, if the business is operating legally and it's, I mean, the town, I mean, anyone can sue anybody, but the, the liability that the town would incur would be, would be a stretch. But obviously we all see how, um, people will reach out in, in a manner of ways, but, um, it would be unlikely that, uh, it would be an issue, um, that would, uh, generate a, an insurance discussion. But it's a, it's a good question.
What, what I can add to that discussion to show you that I've been tracking this and diligently trying to get information, is there's a, a very close town that didn't do the moratorium like we did. And they had an applicant come in to establish a business prior to the moratorium, and they got shot down recently, like last, earlier this month or the end of last month by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and now they're being sued. So that's a situation where the town's insurance would be involved. So, um, the fact that we put a moratorium in there and we got a town attorney's opinion that we can extend that while we work on it to push it to a referendum on an advisory question on how the board of selectmen should move forward, I think we're doing the right thing. But as, as Peter stated, I don't think if the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, rules and then, uh, the vote was to allow these and they did it properly, we wouldn't have any liability.
And I have seen that. I won't, I won't belabor the point, but I have seen exactly the scenario you're describing, and you're right. The town wouldn't really effectively have any liability. If you're following the rules, you're, you're not liable. So in that case, I have seen it specifically. So I, I think you're right on point on that, Andy. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Moving, moving on. Our next thing would be, uh, the proclamation. And I just wanna go on record, uh, because a lot of people have started throwing some daggers at me, and that's okay. I'm tough. Uh, my thing is, I, I am big on inclusiveness and I wanna make sure that we, I, I just get so, so nervous. I see nationwide where every group is, is vying for something. And I think sometimes the results are opposite of what people are hoping, where people get more contentious, more issues, more problems, more, uh, irritation, whatever the proper words are. You know, to me, inclusiveness is everybody. And I, looking at, we have a possible, you know, I, I look at this as, as an option to include everybody, irregardless of whatever. You know, if, if you are a human being that walks on two legs, everybody should be included. Uh, and so that's basically where I'm coming from. Um, you know, I keep reading and rereading this thing. Um, you know, I'll let Tiffany, if, if you wanna start, since this was your project that you took on. Um, you know, and then at some point, you know, I'd like to state what my concerns are, my thoughts, uh, then, you know, open it up for discussion, I guess. Tiffany?
Actually, Andy has his hand raised. Do you wanna acknowledge him first?
Yes.
Thank you, Selectman Tealy and Chairman Larson. So I just wanna let you know what is on the books as far as proclamation requests, uh, and protocols. So in Hebron, we're very vague with that. So what you have in front of you, we prepared in the office, uh, Secretary Lee sent us in, um, what she thought would be, um, appropriate. So you'll see, it's, it's got written, proposed on it. And the, the proclamation protocol, all we have in Hebron says proclamation request will be considered on an individual basis. So that's where we are tonight. It was brought up, uh, a proposal submitted in front of the board today. Now you guys can act how you deem, uh, fit.
Okay, thank you. Tiffany?
Sure. So, um, a couple of things. So this proclamation was taken from, uh, the language was taken from, uh, other towns and municipalities approved proclamations from last year and this current year. So none of the language has been created by me. Um, it's language that I've kind of, um, you know, that copied, so to speak, um, from other places that have done similar proclamations. Um, I kept it intentionally short, um, because a lot of them were quite long. I made sure to not include anything, um, about flag protocols, because some proclamations we were looking at, at our last meeting had that in there. And so I wanted to be sensitive to that. So I'll just say a couple of quick things. Um, first, I, I am disappointed that people who requested that their letters be read into the record were not read into the record tonight. Um, I thought some of those letters were quite powerful. Um, and I think that it seems a little inconsistent with what we've done previously. And perhaps that warrants a larger discussion at a future meeting. I think I would appreciate that, to understand that. Um, and secondly, yes, inclusiveness is about everyone. Um, but it's also about including people who have been routinely kept out of certain civil rights in this country as the LGBTQ community has had to fight for. Um, and I think that Hebron is an inclusive place and we can, we say that to people who move here. We say that over and over again in all of our communications. So we can choose to live that value, um, and acknowledge this today, uh, because I think that that makes a strong, the strongest statement about how we feel about inclusivity in our town. So, um, again, a lot of this language was, um, brought from other proclamations approved throughout Connecticut and Massachusetts. So I kind of borrowed politely, um, from those areas. Um, and I kept it short so that we could read through it tonight.
Okay. The things and, and the easiest thing is, is going down the list. One, two, three, the fourth one, where we remain vigilant against, uh, wow, lights, continued discrimination against, and it says the L, the LGBTQ. I wanted to change that to discrimination against any community. Uh, you know, um, period, any community. And then the next line down, we affirm in our support for all residents. You know, so I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to include everybody. I'm not.
I, but.
That's my concern. I'm trying to include, you know, I just feel it's important. I'm trying, yeah, I see nationally, everybody is, is tearing everybody apart and it's gotta stop. And I'm looking at this as a possible way that we can try to, to blend this along with everybody else, because everybody is important in this town. As I say, anybody that walks on, on two legs, I mean, everybody should be inclusive in our town. And that's, that's where I'm coming from. I, I, I just hate, you know, if I can, I'm, I'm making myself clear. So I apologize. I'm not.
No, I, so I think, um, I, you know, again, this is about acknowledging a community whose very civil rights are under attack right now. Um, we have, you know, frankly, we have Republican-led states that are passing laws that will allow for, um, people to check children's genitals in terms of which sport they participate in. And we might not wanna talk about that, but that's the reality of what's happening across the country. And so I agree with you, Dan, that of, of course, we remain vigilant against discrimination against anybody. But I think in the context of this particular proclamation, this is about recognizing a certain sect of the community, which is how I see proclamations in general. We do a lot of proclamations where we acknowledge people, um, with learning disabilities or people who, um, you know, from different parts of our community. They're all included in our community. We're just acknowledging them through a specific proclamation. So that's why I wanted to go this route.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be, if I may, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd be interested in, in what Mark and Gail have to say, cause obviously the three of us were at the last meeting and we started to explore the topic a little bit. So I, if, if you don't mind, I would be interested in Mark, hearing from Mark and Gail, just so we can get sort of some, uh, some additional perspective, uh, uh, on this. Thank you.
You wanna go first, Gail?
She's on mute.
I'll go first. I'll have to go back to my New York days when I was in theater groups. So I've always dealt with all kinds of people in the community and haven't been in theater groups for many, many years. Um, I've seen a lot of people being put down, prejudiced against not having civil rights. So all people, I agree with Dan, all people are entitled to their right, to their rights. And what Tiffany's trying to do here is call attention to one particular group that is currently under fire. So I think we ought to vote.
Mark?
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with Gail that we should vote, but just two quick comments. Um, sometimes people who struggle or people need extra protection, so therefore the specificity of some proclamations. And Dan, I, everybody knows you have a good heart. And to want everybody to be equal and that everybody gets equal protection and equal attention and protection from discrimination i- is, is kind, is, is noble. But sometimes there are certain groups and certain times when things are happening, we have to take a step forward and be more specific. Um, I've never investigated a hate crime in Hebron. I've never, whether it be racial, uh, based on sexuality, anything. In Hartford, I did, and they're terrible. So, um, I don't see what harm this does to anybody. If you're offended by this, um, you really have to take a big step to be offended by this, cause who is it hurting by making a proclamation saying we wanna look out for somebody who needs looking out for? So, um, I, I'm in favor of it and I would like to vote too, guys.
Okay. Peter?
I, I, I agree. I appreciate that. I think Mark hit it right on the head. I appreciate everyone's comments. I appreciate the work that Tiffany did. And, and it is Pride Month, so it is, it is specific as well as, as others have articulated. So, um, I, I, again, I, like Mark said, I appreciate your sentiment, Dan, but this I think is something that is very specific and, and as such, just like when we did the, I'm sorry, Gail, I forget the name, uh, that you feel so passionate about. Yeah. Um, obviously, uh, would, at that, just to make a correlation, we would say, well, why are we singling out one group of children who are struggling? Um, but it, it's for a reason. It's specific to correlate to, uh, to a broader message that the, the community's trying to deliver at that moment. So, um, I, I, I'm on board and, and as I just heard, I, I'll, I'll call, I'll call the question. Let's vote.
Okay. Uh, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Uh, no, 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 no. You don't get off that easy, young lady.
No, I thought, I thought I was calling the question. So I thought that moved you right to a vote.
Oh, okay. She's right. But, okay. Yes. I was gonna have you.
Mr. Chairman?
I was gonna have you read it.
Oh, I can read it. Sure.
The question first, and then, then you're gonna read it.
Andy had something?
I was just gonna say you need to read it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would you like me to read it now?
Uh, no, no, because we have to call the question first. Then, heaven forbid, we don't do the procedure.
Okay.
So Tiffany? Aye.
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. Now Tiffany?
Whereas Hebron is a town that values diversity and inclusion and is committed to equal rights and opportunities for all its residents. And whereas Hebron observes June as a time to honor the LGBTQ community and reflect upon the important contributions of LGBTQ residents to the town and the United States as a whole. And whereas, the town celebrates the accomplishments of the LGBTQ community towards securing important rights and freedoms, often through struggle and adversity. And whereas, we remain vigilant against continued discrimination against the LGBTQ community, especially the trans community. And whereas, we affirm our support for our LGBTQ residents and stand with them to protect their civil rights and ability to live openly without fear. Now therefore, we, the Hebron Board of Selectmen hereby proclaim June 2022 as LGBTQ. Now therefore, we, the Hebron Board of Selectmen, hereby proclaim June 2022 as LGBTQ Pride Month. And we encourage all residents to join us in continuing to build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance for all.
Okay, hearing the proclamation, all in favor, signify by do we vote on this? Yes, we do. Saying, I'm very saying, aye, we just do it. Again, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Do we read these? I don't remember.
No, that's why I was a proposed, so what you voted on earlier would have said to move forward with the proposed motion, read it and then vote on it to accept it, but it's fine. You got it done.
Okay. Mine is a terrible thing, so I left mine outside. Okay, Andy? Our next item?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 9A, this is something we do pretty much every year. Review Board of Selectmen's Summer Meeting Schedule attaches the approved 2022 meeting schedule. The Selectmen should discuss the schedule of July meetings. The Town Manager proposes to cancel the first July 2022 Selectmen's meeting. And then there's a motion moved at the Board of Selectmen cancel the July 7, 2022 Selectmen's meeting as recommended by the Town Manager. Without going into too many details, you can speak if you want, Dan.
No, I mean, first off, it's right after the Fourth. Anybody that's trying to do anything on the Fourth of July, this gives them a chance to not have to come back. It just, it just works well and hopefully everybody will be happy with this action. So motion would be that the Hebron Board of Selectmen cancel the July 7, 2022 Selectmen's meeting as recommended by the Town Manager. A discussion? Hearing none. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, our next thing is, we have a little space here.
Next is 9B, approve and sign the tax rate bill. The Board of Finance set the mill rate at their meeting on May 26, 2022. The tax rate bill will be finalized by the Revenue Collector. And there's a draft attached. Donna will show that. Then there's a proposed motion.
Okay. Do we need to state what that amount was? The tax rate? No, I can't see it. I'm sorry.
The number is 31.70 mil.
Thank you. Moved at the Hebron Board of Selectmen approved and signed the tax rate bill dated June 2, 2022 as presented by the Revenue Collector. And as a footnote, that tax rate being proposed is 31.70. So hearing the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Our next is
agenda for July 21, 2022.
Right? Okay, again, correct. So anybody has anything that, that they want to get added onto the agenda or what have you? Oh. I think everything else is on here, but if anybody sees anything, make the phone call. Eight papers. Our next would be our consent agenda. And it's going to be a long, long meeting, but I know Gail has got a number of amendments or corrections to the minutes. So we are going to have to vote on each. Separately is going to be the easiest way of doing it. So our first would be to approve the minutes of April 21, 2022.
Okay, you want me to start, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Okay, on the third page, under eight, old business, very simple, we just have to under A, the opera, it's not attached, it was presented. We do not have a schedule attached. And then down under cannabis, which is subsection B, take out that sentence attached is a memo, as we obviously don't have a memo attached. And the same thing with C, any other old business. Those are kind of minor, but then on the page with new business, we have to get to item C, approved purchase of new police vehicle. The information Andrew Tierney presented the information regarding the acquisition of a new police vehicle and explained. So that, these are legal documents, folks, they have to be corrected. Anything else on that one? Oh, yes. Under E, budget communication. The whole, first paragraph, if you go down to the next, it is appropriate. That paragraph and the three items under it were not part of our meeting. So they, that needs to be stricken out. And now under item nine, I yeah, it's, it's just a sentence, the word is brought and the T was missing, so that's, my eyes were on a roll then. Now under the last page, anticipated executive session. Dan Lawson invited A Tierney into executive session at, the time was actually 9:12. The board came out of executive session at 9:23. Then under adjournment, Gail moved to adjourn the meeting at 9:23. Not 9:09.
Okay. Does anybody have any other items on that, on that agenda or that minutes? Hearing none, I asked that we vote on the April 21, 2022 regular meeting minutes as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, make a motion to approve the minutes of May 5, 2022, the regular meeting.
Okay. On page two, Douglas Library resignation. It was me, G Richmond, who moved at the Hebron Board of Selectmen, accept the resignation. Then on Commission on Aging, where it was three, it should be two people expressed an interest. And so the name that should be omitted is Catherine McSweeney. The two remaining should be Angela and Carol. Then moved at the Hebron Board of Selectmen, make the following appointments, and two separate motions were made. Because Angela Kurten and one, and Carol Wheeler for the other. The motions passed with all in favor. Now, one of these pages, see. Now we have to get down to the page with, under cannabis, where pollinator pathway resolution. Somehow it says attached and there's a whole paragraph. That resolution was not attached and should not be part of our minutes. Then I went down two more pages. The resolution became effective upon adoption. And it says in witness whereof, that sentence is not appropriate there. That's not what we did. And the last page, the Board of Selectmen members agreed to table the liaison reports until the next meeting, not next week. I think that did it, Dan.
Okay. Any other, anybody else have any other changes to those minutes or corrections? Hearing none. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Myself, aye. Make a motion to approve the minutes of May 12, 2022, the public hearing. Do you have anything on that one? Gail?
No, I'm waiting for May 19.
Oh, okay. So does anybody have any issues with the minutes of the public hearing? Hearing none, all in favor of acceptance. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Move that we approve the minutes of the May 19 regular meeting. I know Gail's got some corrections.
I think we should note right up on top that Peter was there only until 7:46. You all might remember that. And actually, Dan called the meeting in order at 7:01. I usually write that down. Okay, item five, good to know. Eliminate special recognition, and it should be Raymond Brook preserve grand opening June 4, 2022 at 9 a.m. Then Farmers and Artisan Market, it should be noted at Saturday, June 4, the 18th, which is Hebron Day, July 2, 23, August 6 and 20. And I think this is a typo, and the surrounding communities on the second line down under that, Bible producers and practice few and surrounding community. Town manager's report, item seven, the first line, A Tierney is working with the town manager, no, A Tierney is working with the town planner. Item B, the opera plan. Again, it says attached and it should be presented, because we're not attaching those things. Now, next page after that one, there's a paragraph called the Selectmen may wish to continue. That whole paragraph doesn't belong in there. It was not what occurred that evening. And then there's, the next paragraph has Andy's name stuck at the end of it. Eliminate that. And then, of course, we have to capitalize the T in Town of Hebron on the next one. And if you're going to go in order, it would be that Peter left the meeting at that time, 7:46. Communications with the Hebron community. The paragraph down is a list of current avenues of communication utilized by the town was presented. And A Tierney stated, may be time to reconsider ways of communicating with the community and budget informational provided. That whole list of items were not items that we discussed that evening.
How do you want to correct that? Or do you have, or do you want it stricken, or how do you want to correct that section?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
The list was not something that was presented as a list like that. It should be a list of current avenues of communication utilized by the town was presented. That's it. He said it may be time to reconsider. That's something for us to do in the future. But all those items that were listed there should not be on there. So it's, well, whatever everyone thinks.
Okay. Is that it for that, that one?
And I think I'm done.
Dan, I have a change. Under my public comment, it's just a missing word, should read, asked for a moment to reflect on and acknowledge. So it's missing the word and there.
Okay.
I missed that, huh, Tiffany?
Well, I caught it just now, to be fair. So yeah. And right there, thank you.
Okay.
Didn't make the, the minutes of our meeting are the legal records of our meetings. And it's why I'm always very fussy that they have the right time that we adjourned, the right time that we were called to order. What was actually said, I, I think we need to be careful.
Okay, no, I agree.
Personal bias.
No, I, I agree. So hearing the changes, all in favor of the changes as stated for the May 19, 2022 regular meeting, signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Good job, Gail. Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter? Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. And then last would be make a motion to approve the following, the minutes of the June 2, 2022 regular meeting. And
I have a change.
That was just the three of us.
Yeah, I have, I have a change, Mr. Chairman. So for additions, changes to the agenda, can that first sentence just simply read to discuss the Pride Month proclamation, period? I don't think we need that additional language in there. That wasn't, it wasn't exactly what I said, so.
Nope, that's fine.
Okay. I think we can just simplify it and say that I asked it, because I did ask to request a proclamation, not a declaration. I think it's important that we're precise with that.
Yep, no, I think that is very, very fair. Okay.
That was all I had.
Okay. Peter, did you, anything?
No.
Okay. So all in favor of the June 2, 2022 regular meeting? Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond will abstain as I was not present.
Correct. Mark?
I wasn't present either, so I'll abstain.
And I'm glad to know that you sound better and are doing better, by the way.
Thanks, thanks, Dan.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. And then the tax refund as listed, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, our next thing would be our Okay, our next thing would be our liaison report. Let's go right, Tiffany?
Yes, I have on, an update from, um, open space. Um, the open space committee will be attending Hebron Day as part of its continued public outreach, um, and open space maps will be displayed. Um, at the planning and zoning meeting this past Tuesday, um. The, the P and Z voted to approve referral to the town regarding. Eight and a half acre open space acquisition of the Raymond parcel, which is along the west side of Mill Stream Road and. Believes that is a special meeting, um, that we're going to have on June twenty eighth. Um, the Salmon River Watershed Partnership will continue its, um, stream water quality monitoring analysis. So the monitoring will begin at the end of June and extends to the end of August. Um, volunteers who will be performing the monitoring include Chris Frey, Frank Zikus and Ian Zikus. Um, this monitoring affect the temperature and some other pertinent water quality measurements, so it's a, it's a good, important project. Um, and that is what I have for this evening.
Okay, uh, Gail?
Gail wants to go back and tell you that she missed something on, uh, an old, um, on the April twenty first meetings, I can't read my own scribbling. But I think it's important to note under item four, public comment, that David Rose was present. Um, the, whatever name was written in there was misinterpreted. Now, you want me to do liaison reports?
No.
Oh, we got a vote on that, huh?
Yes. Stepping back, I'm asking that.
Amending my amendment.
Okay, uh, that we re-vote on and that was the, which one?
April twenty first.
So making a motion that we revisit and make another correction. On the April twenty first. Uh, regular meeting, including, uh, David Rose as being. How do you want to word that, being present at the meeting?
Yes, under public comment, it says another name, it says D Gross email was read. And it should be David Rose's email was read into the minutes by Donna.
Okay, so is that clear to everyone?
Just get the right guy there.
Yep, um, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Myself, aye, okay, now back to liaison. You are, you're on, Gail.
Oh, okay, the Commission on Aging Senior Center, um, they're the intake, intake site for individuals needing assistance. With water or sewer bills through the state's new program to help with those expenses. Um, the rent to rebate applications have also now been taken. And the senior center is proud to say that they re, they are showing movies again, um. Twice, once a month on this second Monday. And they're going to have a big trip up to Rhine's Deli for a special luncheon on June twenty third. Douglas Library, they have the new three D printer with a multi-material add-on. Patrons can make appointments for staff assistance and this was purchased with donations. Um, teens are busy this summer, they'll be having events on Tuesday at two thirty in the community room. And the Hebron Board of Ed, mostly you probably know the graduation is tomorrow night for the sixth graders. That's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mark?
Uh, speaking of graduations, we had one last night, uh, senior class graduated. It's always a festive and great night, but you're always a little tense hoping that the kids can stay safe and they stayed safe. And, uh, this morning, the, uh, middle school had their step up, I don't know why they'll call it a graduation, it's a step up, so. That went successfully. Everybody's sad over the loss of Scott Leslie, he's helping transition the new superintendent in. And, um, I know personally, I'm going to miss him and, uh, he's as good as it gets at anything. And, um, I, I don't think you could, you could find enough accolades to describe what Scott Leslie has meant to this community. And I wanted to state that, also somewhat related to school, since the Uvalde shooting. I've gotten more requests in the past two weeks to do active shooter trainings than I ever have, and I discussed this with Peter Casper at length yesterday. Um, and, uh, all of our officers, uh, Alice certifications, if you're not familiar with Alice. Alice is an active shooter response where the police and teachers and students work together. Um, so we're going to work hard at getting everybody going with that again. And, um, for those of you didn't know, I'm actually an active shooter instructor, so I'm going to be going out to some churches. And trying to be a little better at this and, uh. People are, people are, uh, a lot more afraid than I've experienced in the past and, uh. That's troubling to me, so as a town, we're going to do the best we can to, uh, make, make people feel safe and actually be safe. So I know that wasn't quite a Ram, uh, comment, but I wanted to get that out there, guys, thanks.
No, thank you, thank you. Uh, Peter?
Uh, nothing new for the two boards, uh, the board and the commission that I, uh, on the liaison, so nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, um, I've got Andy, first off.
Yes, I'm, uh, happy to announce that, uh. Now I forgot the name of the company, Holes, and there's back in town, the generators have arrived for the pump stations. They're building the, uh, the concrete products that we needed are built, they're up at United Concrete. The parts that we needed to assemble and install them are happening as we speak, so the project has resumed. And we're hoping to, we have a finished date of, uh, before Christmas.
Okay. Beautiful, is that going to be a problem with the bonding, because it was supposed to be done by a certain time or?
I, it, it's, I, I, you know. If, if it wasn't, if it was in somebody's control, I would say yes, but clearly this is, um, an extension of COVID. Not being the availability, same thing with the meters, Dan, um, so we're gonna, we're gonna write a letter stating our, our case and I. I can't imagine somebody not being realistic and no, it's not anybody's fault other than the pandemic.
Well, you just, you just can't get stopped. Um, my reports, couple of things, uh, one, the, uh, Fire Department Corporation, they handed out the, they do a, a. Uh, scholarship, like wow, bright brain, what? To people getting into, you know, different emergency type fields. And so, uh, the recipient this year was Mr. Custer, who's graduated out of RAM. Uh, this year is going into paramedic training, so that was nice. And then the only other thing is, um, the Peters, uh, house is coming along very well, uh. You know, the, the people, uh, on the Hebron Historic Properties Commission, um, John Menard. Uh, my wife, Pat, um, everybody's been putting in all different kinds of hours, cleaning and. It's really a beautiful structure and I really hope people during the, uh, Family Day events will be able to go up there. Plus, uh, Code is doing, uh. Many things up there and I can't tell you what they all are, because I haven't been involved in those meetings. But I know they're going to be doing things up there, uh, you know, and then I guess also at Hebron Day, I think they're having a car show too. Andy, you know about that?
Yes, yes, they are.
Just a lot of different things going on.
Rich Marcy's done a great job.
Yes, yep, um, the, uh, ribbon cutting ceremony at the, at the new bridge went great. Uh, anybody who hasn't gone down there should really take a walk down, there is a parking lot, uh, with an entrance off of, uh, Mill Stream. It's, I can't tell you the exact how far up it is, there is actually a sign there, there's a small parking lot that you can walk down to the bridge. Boy Scouts did a little, uh, two picnic table picnic site down there. Uh, and I have not myself walked it, but I guess that literally you can walk all the way up to, uh. You know, Bikini Road, uh, eighty-five, uh, Church Street area, so. Other than that, good exercise. And I think that's everything I've got. So our next thing would be public comment again. Uh, unless anybody has anything else. Hearing none. Uh, Donna?
There is no one indicating that they want to make public comment at this time.
Okay. Well, with that, people. Gail?
At eight twenty, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, and hopefully see everybody at Hebron Day.
Thank you, good night.
Good meeting, guys.
One last.
Good job, everybody.
Wait, one last thing, I just got a text, the Fire Department also made a donation to, uh, Hebron Interstate.
Okay.
Um, and I don't have any of the amounts, so, thank you.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
Good night, everyone.